The January 23rd, 2024 special meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wade, please call the board.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Iaplo.
Here.
Ms. Justin.
Present.
Ms. Marchesa.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know this is going to happen. Are you okay?
But limbo. I promise I didn't hit the button.
You had a worker's confidence. Board of Education report and recommendations.
So it is recommended that the board member in service attendance for the Board 101 training for Ms. Marchesa and Ms. Iaplo be approved?
So moved. Second.
Please call the board.
Ms. Justin.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchesa.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries by zero. And then the other piece that I'll jump into here, just to give everybody a quick update on some of the school safety pieces coming out of the levy season back in November, and that'll kind of tie in nicely to what Mr. Wade will jump into then from the financial aspect. So just a couple of notes for our group here. With the failure of issue three, which was that 2.5 mil PI levy, we made the following school safety cuts from the capital improvement plan. For fiscal year '24, it's $456,500. And then in fiscal years '25 through '28, it's $300,000 for each year. So that's a total reduction over the five-year forecast of 1.656 million. Those items that were scheduled to be purchased using some of that money were the safety vestibules at each of our buildings, the door sensors for all of our exterior doors in the district, and then some of the ballistic film that we were considering for some of the glass areas around our entrance ways. And then some of the additional camera software pieces that we had been looking into. For example, the Zero Eyes was one of those companies that we were looking at. Some of that now will be cut out of that capital improvement plan. We do have a fairly small school safety budget that tends to get eaten up pretty quickly with a couple of things that we have on an annual basis. We have something called Navigate 360 that is a software component that ties into our emergency plans that we utilize. So a lot of the money goes towards that. But a couple of things that we will do with that money that we have in that budget is just to try and maintain what the current safety components that we have, things like cameras, radios, software, like I said with Navigate 360. We will also use that to add a couple of those little nominal safety components. I know we've had some conversation around like the door stickers that we have in most of our buildings now, but trying to standardize those and then have that two-sided so there's a message for students and staff on the inside and then the message for visitors on the outside. So we'll be able to try and get that wrapped into our safety budget this year. And then the other thing, coming out of the large-scale drill that we had at the high school, our law enforcement and fire departments have key card access to our buildings, but oftentimes they don't know which doors have the key card access. And during the drill itself, one of the units actually went to the wrong door that didn't have a key card access. So one of the solutions that, it's been interesting as we've jumped into this school safety role here this year, obviously, Mr. Porter was doing a lot of our safety work in the past. But one of the names that kept popping up was Jenna Skolski, who was our safety director before Mr. Porter was doing that. So I actually reached out to her and just had a conversation with her to say, hey, can you give me some updates on some of these things? And one of the items was these blue reflective metal pieces that we would actually put above each of the, or right near each of the entrance ways that has a key card access. So like even at night, if there was an emergency situation and police and fire were to come out of the scene, they could very easily, you know, from their cars, either the headlights or a flashlight, flash those up and see exactly where those key card entry points are for them. So that's another fairly nominal fee that we might consider using with our safety budget either this year or the beginning of next year, depending on how much is left, which... A little? Just a little?
Just whatever you need.
Oh, mm-hmm. Okay. So those are a couple of the things that we're looking at there. The other things that we need to consider here as we move forward, and this is something that Mr. Wade and I have talked about a lot, especially since we've got the new radios in here this year with the school safety grant funding, is really getting those things on a rotation schedule to replace those. Obviously, it was a pretty big investment here this year, but again, all paid for by state funds, which was a great thing for us. But very similar to what we have with a lot of our other big-ticket items, you know, computers and, you know, buses, those sorts of things. We've got all of those on rotation schedules. We want to start doing that with both our security cameras because obviously some of our cameras were fairly outdated. And then number two is those radios as well. So obviously, we don't want to replace all 900 every, you know, seven to 10 years, but you know, if we can do, you know, 100 each year, that would allow us to really kind of drag that out and be cost-effective in the long run while keeping our equipment up to date and usable in our school buildings. So that's one of the considerations we're going to be putting together here, too. Obviously, there will be some costs associated with that. So Mr. Wade, leaving it to my next bullet point, and then I was reading an email he sent me a little bit earlier today, but we are going to continue to pursue some of the grant funding. The Attorney General's Office has put another 6 million out, so we're going to look at that and see what we can secure as far as grant funding and figure out how we can start to incorporate some of that into the work that we're doing with this rotation replacement schedule.
Would this be a yearly? We'd find out yearly if we receive that grant?
Those are, oftentimes, they're like one-shot deals. It's been a little bit more frequent of late. We, so we got the big safety grant, obviously, last year, but we were also able to secure a couple of smaller grants, and that's probably what this is going to be as well. I can't imagine that they're going to give us...
It's like 30,000.
It's like 450 a student.
I was wondering what the timeline was.
Yeah.
And how we'd find out. Not sure.
Oh, yeah.
You're basically applying to get this one.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Which is, is that different? Because I know there was a couple last year. We missed the first one, and then we got the next two, right?
No, those are different. Those are the ones that were, the second one, we got the million dollars on. Yeah.
So we didn't get approved the first round. We got approved the second round. That was the big one. And then there were two Attorney General grants that were smaller, kind of the 30,000, 40,000 dollar grants that we used to kind of outfit those other radios that we didn't have secured yet. And that allowed us to get Garfield done, and I believe some of CARES done as well.
Did they give us more that second time because we didn't get it the first time? Because we didn't submit for it? Or was it just because that, just kind of like...
No, I think they gave us the same amount that we had been asking for.
We would have gotten, okay.
Yeah, I think we were asking for 1.2, and they gave us 900,000. And part of that was because Garfield didn't have an IRN.
Garfield doesn't have an IRN, does it?
Yeah.
Because it's not, yeah, it's not a K-12.
That's right.
So what that allowed us to do with the Attorney General grant then was do the radios for Garfield out of that grant. So we'll continue to apply for those grants whenever they come available and try and nickel and dime some things here to keep things rolling. Final thing from school safety, and I mentioned this in State of the Schools here a little bit earlier today, but we are going to continue to push that School Resource Officer Expansion Plan. Those are not tied to PI levy funds. That's why we're continuing to push that. Mr. Wade was able to get some budget pieces put in place for the next couple of years here. Did we do three or four years of that? I can't remember.
I'd have to go back and look at your plan, but whatever your plan was that you shared with me, that's how I budgeted it in the five-year forecast.
So the thought was trying to get two additional, what would be the equivalent of two additional officers each year over the next three or four years. That would then allow us to have one resource officer in each of our buildings. As I had mentioned before in State of the Schools today, we're still struggling to get that out of the Mentor Police Department because their guys are just tapped out with a lot of things. But opening up for Mentor on the Lake has been very promising, and a couple of reasons for that may have mentioned before, but they have recently switched from eight-hour shifts to 12-hour shifts, which takes them from five days down to four days, which opens up three days in their week that they potentially could step into some of these four-hour shifts that we're trying to get filled. The other component with Mentor on the Lake is they don't have nearly the number of details assigned to them as the City of Mentor does. So a lot of their officers are kind of like chomping at the bit to be able to do some extra duty coverage. So they've been jumping on the Lake schedule here pretty quickly here in January. So it's very promising there at that point. What our hope is after we look at the coverage rates here in January and February, that we might then extend those shifts that aren't covered from the Mentor Police Department in our other elementaries. We might send those over to Mentor on the Lake and see if they would be willing to cover, you know, at Bellflower or at Ridge or at Orchard Hollow, you know, somewhere else in the district where we've been trying to get coverage and we just can't at this point. And then the next step then beyond that would be having some conversation with the Lake County Sheriff's Department then as well, so that we would have kind of that three-tiered approach. Obviously, our first step would be to try and get a Mentor Police Officer first. After that, Mentor on the Lake. After that, potentially then Lake County Sheriff. So in February here, we'll reevaluate, at the end of February, we'll reevaluate, we'll put some schedules together for March, April, and May at Lake. But then we might also be able to take some of those shifts from the Mentor Police Department that aren't being filled and have those filled by Mentor on the Lake and see how that works.
Do you think we'd have a good idea of if that's going to work out by like the end of May? Is that what, just because if we are going to do something like through the Sheriff's Department, we would probably have to start on that pretty early for next year?
Yeah. Well, I'll probably be having some conversations with the Sheriff's Department here in February anyway.
Okay.
Just to start that relationship. I have not actually met with him at this point yet, but that's something that I think we've got an interest in. Again, the other thing I know we've talked a lot about are the retired officer piece and trying to get them in. Again, we're still trying to be good partners with the City of Mentor, and they've got so many officers in the drop right now that if we were to offer that, a bunch of them would leave, and then they wouldn't have, they don't have the fillage rate on the backend to bring new officers in. So we're trying to hold off on that as long as possible by utilizing Mentor on the Lake and then potentially the Sheriff's Office. But once we get that workforce kind of back up to some good numbers, that'll be the next phase of maybe what we're looking at.
Does, so like Riverside, they do retired police officers, right? And it's not just through their district because they've taken some that were in the drop program at Mentor that have decided to retire, and then they took them. So if we assume by May, if we're not seeing the kind of outcome that we want, can we at that point like set up a meeting for all of us to discuss having kind of our own force if we need to? You know, I mean, because that's essentially what Riverside does, right? And we've had that conversation here.
Yeah, and I don't think that's a direction we would prefer to go.
Right.
And if we're backed into a corner and we're trying to get this goal met, that may be a direction we'd have to head. The one thing that we have done is we've secured that contract that Riverside has with the Lake County Sheriff's Office and have run that through our legal counsel, and he's like, this contract's not good. So we would want to make sure that we're negotiating our own agreement with them should we head that direction. So we'll have to see where we're at here in May and make some decisions as we jump into '24, '25 school year.
I think that sounds good. Because I know, I know March of, two years ago in March was when I brought up the retired police officers. So I think we've come, you know, a decent way since then, but I think there's, you know, more that we can do.
Yeah.
If we're, like you said, if we exhaust every other option.
Yeah.
We got it.
And again, we're going to try and push the envelope as much as we can with them. And I think Ms. Kirby over there keeps laughing because, you know, it's been something that's been going on for seven or eight years now, so obviously predates me quite a bit, but well, predates most of us quite a bit. But I think we've made some strides this year that maybe they weren't willing to do in the past, and we're getting there. It's a slow, painful grind, but we're getting there. And again, this is one of the goals that I know I personally have. I know our board has that goal as well, and we want to continue to push that expansion plan as much as we can. Are there any other thoughts around what we're doing with the School Resource Officer Expansion Program?
I just had a couple of questions. So if the individual who's filling a shift is from a different entity, is the compensation the same? So if you're doing this duty, it's this many dollars an hour?
A lot of, a lot of it depends on what their off-duty rate is. So that's dictated by the organization themselves. So City of Mentor may be a little bit different from Mentor on the Lake.
So we're following...
But we've, we've kind of shared with them, well, this is what we're paying the City of Mentor group, and I think they're...
It's the same rate, yeah. Currently, it's the same rate, yeah.
The only issue, and I think we've had this discussion before, is if we do have a retired officer who's not attached to a department, how is that oversight and qualification maintained? That gets, we always agreed that we didn't think that was our area of expertise. And can they sign up like we would have a substitute, you know, through a software clearinghouse? So maybe after this much time, it opens up to additional individuals? Is that, so you don't have a lot of headaches or HR?
Right. And that's one of the things that is in that contract right now, and you know, how that's spelled out with Riverside and Lake County sheriffs. As Andy said, it's almost like we're, they're dealing with their own police force in their school district. And, you know, that's not a direction we would love to head. If it is, I know Bill would be a great police chief, and we'd put a nice badge on him. It would be awesome.
My dad was a fire chief, so I mean, it's like, it's like a...
You're close.
Legacy.
Yeah.
I like it. You're hired.
Thank you.
Yeah, because that becomes, even in terms of liability insurance, who carries that? All of those pieces?
And those are the legal things that our legal counsel brought up that he's like, yeah, we would want to completely overhaul what this agreement says.
Chief doesn't really want that either in the discussions that we've had with him.
No. And again, I think ultimately in those conversations we've had with the City of Mentor, I know Mr. Filippiak is all about wanting to expand our program. It's just a matter of, we need the bodies, and we need people getting into the workforce. So I know one of the other things we've kind of thrown around a little bit since we've got the EMT Academy with, you know, Mentor Fire, you know, how do we get like a junior police academy rolling? You know, there are some age requirements that are a little bit prohibitive with this, but it's something that, again, I think, you know, if there's a way that we can address some of that educationally here and start those career interest pieces, similar to kind of what we talked about at State of the Schools with the career academies, you know, how do we create that for, you know, the police officer world that maybe we can start to fill that pipeline for them? And let's start growing our own. And, you know, I know Mentor, the City of Mentor has a pretty high threshold for their, you know, what they require out of a police officer, and that's part of the issue right now, too. And they're hiring the best of the best every single time, and there's just not huge numbers of the best of the best right now. So is there something that we can do here that might help grow that best of the best so that we can fill that pipeline for them?
Because the Lakeshore Compact has a law enforcement academy at, still at Ugly.
Still at Ugly, yeah.
Still at Ugly. And I didn't know, you know, if that was much of a, like the pipeline that you mentioned or how that goes. Plus, there's the maturity piece that any young person needs to kind of go through to be ready for that level of responsibility.
I think, I think that, from my understanding, they were getting sworn in at the Sheriff's Department for the Riverside, for their, yes, okay. And then my understanding was that we would work with the Mentor Police Department, and they would swear them in and, you know, ensure the training and all of that. But what I don't want to see happen again is we had the opportunity to hire two people full-time, and they retired and they went elsewhere because we didn't have that program available yet. So we had the opportunity to have two full-time police officers who were also already filling our off-duty slots at some of our schools, and then now we lost them for the off-duty slots and also the opportunity, you know, to have two full-time police officers.
I think it's important to point out, we didn't lose them, though. The district, it's, you know, we don't hire police officers. We hire, we pay for a service from the police department. We pay them to provide us an officer, and they chose not to do that.
Right. But we, what I'm saying is we lost the opportunity, as in we've had these conversations, we, had we have had a plan in place where we do have something like Riverside, we could have hired them.
Well, I think we have a plan in place. It's the implementation of plan with the local police department. I mean, that's kind of the, I mean, just to be clear for everybody here, I think it's important to realize that I've sat in those discussions, we've approached the city, we've tried to get them to, we've brought this idea up, and the current police chief and the Mr. Filippiak have concerns about that procedure. So we've kind of hit roadblocks from a staffing standpoint. So we, I can assure you that we are trying to, we have the money set aside.
Right, right.
We have the resources to pay for said people, but the difference between us and Riverside, because I obviously worked in Riverside and worked closely with the Sheriff's Department, is they have a greater flexibility because they can deputize people. And then because they have a relationship and the SROs are hired in Riverside through the Sheriff's Department.
Right.
They go to the Sheriff's Department to get those people. So since that kind of system's already set up in place, it's a little bit easier. You know, we've seen that in the past, too, when former administrators who worked here retired from Mentor Police Department and then were deputized by the sheriff.
Right.
So that they could still be considered a police officer, but because he was an employee of ours, because he was an administrator, you know, we were just blast, I guess, because of the fact that he was an employee in a different situation. I think the crux of the issue is getting the relationship between the Sheriff's Department and the city.
And the police department.
Yeah, because we're willing, we have the cash. We just can't get the, it's how do we, how do we get the parties to work so that the jurisdiction piece and the politics of everything that's out of our control works?
And that's what, that's what I'm saying, too. I'm not saying we don't, we lot, like, I'm saying in the grand scheme of things, what people are going to see is that two retired police officers from Mentor left and went somewhere else who wanted to work for us. You know, so that's all people are going to see. So whatever that, that plan is, you know, we don't want to have to do what Riverside did, but if we are forced eventually, and that's the only option, I think we should at least look into it.
And in fairness, I think we have because we did have our lawyer look at those contracts, and we are exploring those options. We haven't ruled them out, but at this point, we're looking at their contracts saying, this isn't the standard that we want. We would want to have a different contract and a different standard.
But again, yeah, agreed, but the other issue is, is when you live in a township like Riverside, and there's no city police force.
The sheriff.
There's, there's no other entity, right? They, they just rely on the Sheriff's Department, so they have a broader scope. It's a little bit easier. The crux of our matter is, is we have a local city police department within our, that covers the majority of our district.
Two.
Yeah. Well, the one that we primarily work with, the majority of our schools are in, except for one, that creates that, just that, that crux of that issue, right? Like, there's...
What does Beechwood do? Because Beechwood was originally, when I brought this up a couple of years ago, Beechwood was the one that I was looking at. They have their own force?
I believe they're, I believe they're hired through Beechwood Police.
Through the police, okay.
Are we able to, and maybe you've already exhausted this, but reach out to other cities, like especially the ones that we service through CTE and that we bring in? Could that be an option to have, use their off-duty officers for overtime to cover shifts?
And it's been interesting because a lot of, like, go back to the fall in football season. You know, traditionally, you know, we have eight officers at each home game, and we were lucky to get three or four this year. And when we got to the playoff game against St. Ignatius, I think we had one that was a Mentor Police Officer. We ended up filling two other slots, one with a Lake County Sheriff and one was from Willoughby.
Willoughby, I bet.
Um, because, yeah, because Eastlake North was hosting a game, oh, they were hosting a Lake County game, that's what it was. So City of Eastlake couldn't provide anything, but Willoughby could. So there was a Willoughby officer that came over, too. So there are examples where we've had off-duty coverage for events that have been covered by other entities. You know, those, that's a little bit different than bringing them into our schools on a regular basis, but again, we'll continue to push it from our end.
And it's going to be, and you're going to have to continue to finesse and massage the relationship between the Sheriff's Department and the city police department, because obviously the Sheriff's Department has jurisdiction. That's the nice thing. They do have jurisdiction over...
All of Lake County.
All of Lake County, correct? So it's, but it's, it's getting everybody to work together.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're willing and able.
Because Mentor is our primary partner for all of the safety, so that, that relationship is so important. You know, they're, they're part of all of our drills and collaboration and planning, so respecting that relationship is a very important piece. You know, and I think, as I, I've given a lot of thought to this, it's different for, let's say, a football game or a one-time event, whatever that might be, versus 182 days, this many hours, times as many buildings as we have, and there's a dynamic piecemeal kind of a reality to filling all those slots, and you're not likely to have any kind of a standing, like, I'll take every Tuesday afternoon because their departments have a dynamic process. So I know we absolutely are committed to that whole safety piece so long as we can provide high-quality service and that it doesn't blow something else up, you know, as far as our relationships and making sure we have the highest quality. Because that, I remember when you said that that contract had some red flags for the attorneys because that liability piece is another whole layer.
One other thing that I'll continue to do then, because as we jumped into the Mentor on the Lake component, our legal counsel kind of has that Lake County Sheriff's contract kind of on the back burner right now. I might ask him to bring that to the forefront again and start crafting something that might be more suitable for our needs. And, you know, we get beat up here in the school district for not having the School Resource Officers. What I will say here tonight is it's not our fault. And I'll leave it at that. And I'll leave it at that.
Oh, I have one quick question that ties back into safety and the police. That incident over the weekend that damaged.
Yes.
Morton, is that on our property insurance to do those repairs?
Well, kind, yeah, we gotta look at the cost of do, to fix the repairs. So do we want to make an insurance claim? Do we want to just replace those doors as part of our, you know, cost of doing business and then try to, obviously, when the perpetrator gets charged, typically, there's a form that comes back to us for costs incurred, and you can try to recoup those. I'm not really sure in this situation that it's likely, based on the facts that I'm aware of.
Yeah, exactly.
But, you know, we gotta, those are things that we look at, you know, what's the deductible? How much is that going to cost? What do we think the long-term impact that's going to be? And right now, because of some of the claims that we've had with the tornadoes that came through, we've had to make some other claims, so it's, we gotta weigh, weigh that's at. We're actually, just as a reminder, we renew in February for a March 1st renewal here, so we're going through that, and we're getting our rates here rather soon, so we're expecting some big increases based on the trends in property insurance from across the country that, because of the number of storms and things that have occurred. We're, we're working, continue to work with Love Insurance to get that. We're even going outside to explore some alternatives to see if there's savings elsewhere. So we're not doing business as usual, but it's something we have to be cognizant of.
It's, isn't there?
It's a great question, but it's, it's, it's not one that's easily answered, I think, in the sense that we gotta kind of weigh how much it is to fix that area versus what are deductibles, and do we really want another claim?
Does the brick need repair or just?
Actually, I went over there the other day just to take a look at it.
Looks like just the door, right?
After our Monday, our Monday morning meeting, and it looks like it's just the door. And the interesting part is, I, it may be pierced a little bit, but it's just a dent on the outside, but I, I think the framing of the door, which is also metal, was bent.
It's bent.
So we had to actually, like, screw some things together to, to keep the alarm sensors from going off. So obviously, that door is out of commission right now until we get it repaired. But the building itself looks like it's in really good shape. And I was anticipating seeing some brickwork that might need to be redone. And there still may be some little pieces, you know, as we pull the frame back to reframe it around there, but overall, it's not too bad. I did tell Ms. Cook when we were speaking, because I, we, we spoke on Monday a little bit about that, too. And we're, we're very fortunate. The, the area that, that, that front-end loader ran into was literally about, if he would have been 10 feet to the left, it would have hit the gas line.
No.
Going into the building. So we were very fortunate that he went just far enough to, to, to miss that. Unfortunate and crazy circumstance, but, you know, knock on wood, it, I, it was the best possible outcome for us.
Part of our district lore for our doors, along with the elephant blasting through the hallway back in the 90s.
I remember that.
Front-end loader.
Yeah, that's a one. We don't have time for that. We'll come back to that.
The circus.
The circus used to be.
Little circus.
They used to do circus.
Well, it still is sometimes, right?
Yeah.
But now with the animals, too.
There's all sorts of things. I learn something new every day.
You can bring it back if you want.
It'd be a fundraising event.
There you go.
Slide where your head's at, Miss Penny.
That's all I had on my report here this evening from school safety. Again, if there are any other questions that, that come up, please let me know. We'll continue to push things from our end, just to make sure we, we keep our buildings as safe as possible.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our budget discussion, I think, we're up.
All right. I think it's always important to, to focus on why, you know, our goal, because I think that drives what we're doing. So, you know, every, every time we do an appropriation to our five-year forecast, we look at these to maintain and enhance fiscal stability by focusing our attention to short-term and long-term planning. I think as a board, you know, your roles are to hire and evaluate and fire, obviously, the superintendent, myself, policy, and then fiscal oversight, and to be a voice and an ear for the community. So obviously, this is one of our important roles that we have to do here, is, you know, how do we evaluate what we're doing now and then into the future to make sure that we have the resources that we need to focus on the other three areas of the strategic plan, primarily the other two, right? When it comes down to education and safety. And that kind of goes into planning pieces. You know, we, we regularly look to explore options for alternative revenue, and we look to maximize our personnel, our facilities and our resources to, to be able to achieve our mission as a district. And then we make sure that we're equitable in the distribution of those resources via buildings and via different programs that we have within the district. I think, you know, our core beliefs have been, since 2004, everything should be done in the context of the five-year forecast. And obviously, that changes twice a year as we make adjustments to our short term, and then we have to, by law, update those in November and May. We know that we have decisions that we can make for every dollar that we spend, and that we know that we should focus that on learning and adding value to what we do. We know our highest areas, you hear me say it all the time, salaries and benefits account for 80% of our budget, and then special education and facilities take up a lot of that other 20%. And we know that quality's always cheaper in the long run. And these kind of have been the tenants of the district prior to my arrival, and something that was ingrained in my head as a, as a young administrator coming into the district many years ago and working with Mr. Wilson, and it's a philosophy that I, I wholeheartedly agree with and continue to work with this board on. I'm gonna fly through, so feel free to stop me, because this is just review from November, and I know everyone was here, so I don't, I'm not trying to insult intelligence, but I just have these slides in here just to kind of rehash. Remember, we made about $5 million in cuts after the levy failure to our capital improvement plan, based on the fact that we had things included, of things that we had desired to do, and continued enhancements, improvements, and necessary things that we felt at that time. So we had a PI levy up to, to kind of looking for the revenue to facilitate those. Once that vote came back, respect the, the voice of the voters, we made adjustments to that prior to the November board meeting, quickly made some adjustments, and we reduced to look at these areas. So these all included, still at the time, the safety implementations that Mr. Heath spoke of 30 minutes ago, about the fact that he's made the decision, which I concur with, which our Citizens Financial Advisory concurred with, that we should take those out, because those were part of what we were looking to accomplish with that PI levy. And you can see that that's equated to $4.9 million in savings. You know, one of the, because salaries and benefits are such a big part of that, you know, I, I always speak to the fact that we have to look at enrollment, and we have to look at our staffing levels to make sure that as our enrollment goes up or down, the staffing level is in a proportion with that. One of our most fluctuating costs that we can't really control is healthcare. You know, you can, you can win and you can lose very big. It's, in healthcare, it's, you know, we do our diligence to continue to educate our staff. We've made adjustments. We meet monthly with our healthcare committee, which made, is made up of administration in both unions, to continue to educate. I send out regular notices to our, our employees about how to consume healthcare, and we continue to work on that. Mr. Heath and his team and Ms. Bowser work to control costs in special education. We've done things creatively for many years with, you know, the, the CARES program that we've instituted and a variety of other programs that we run to help control costs in special education. And then, obviously, facilities, because we have a PI levy that only supports about $1 million. You know, we fund a lot of our facilities maintenance, and, and when we have made upgrades prior to the PI levy, it was out of the general fund. So those expenses are expenses then that get put onto the general fund. But we are a regular levy cycle, the way we fund schools in Ohio. You know, revenue remains relatively flat. We see very, very, very insignificant growth in revenue from increased property values. We do see some, but taxpayers are protected in our district by House Bill 920. We only see growth on the inside millage, as I've shared. So, you know, we don't see a lot of growth in revenue, but obviously, expenses increase at the rate of inflation or whatever those areas are. Healthcare, the average is 8%. So the other thing I like to point out to the board, because we have a policy that states that our general fund balance can't fall below 15%, which is $17.1 million. So keep that number handy. So we have a policy that's put in place that we have, you know, that, so we don't get to a fiscal cliff, so we don't get into another 2004 situation where we're driving and we're giving, you know, and not aware that we're not making changes. I can assure everybody now, we're not, we, we are, you are aware currently of our deficit spend. I, I bring it up monthly. The running joke around here is that I talk too much, but that's because I'd rather have you hear these things and know where we stand, other than going, "Oh, my God, how do we not know this?"
Why didn't you tell us?
"Why didn't you tell us?" So I'm gonna tell you, we're deficit spending today, we'll be deficit spending tomorrow, and if we continue to do what we're doing, we'll be deficit spending into the future. So I share with you these graphs, because they show a nice colorful manner where we're at and where we're headed. You can see that each year, we get closer to the red area, which is where we don't ever want to be. Rule of thumb for our new board members in our community, 90 days on cash on hand is kind of the threshold. You start to flow, fall below 90 days, then you're, you're in a situation where you're in some severe kind of economic turmoil. I would tell you that, I calculated out, $17.15 million is about 56, 57 days of cash on hand. So our policy won't even let us go below that.
And if we do have a levy pass, there's a timeframe before you collect any increase. And I think that's an easy thing for folks not to realize, that you pass a levy today, you don't begin to collect revenue for some period of time.
Correct.
Maybe closer or farther, depending on.
And that's kind of the discussion we had, right? If we were to pass something in March, it doesn't really matter until January of the next year. So that's why one of my recommendations was, is we had a new board coming in. We, and I, and I'll go through those scenarios again, but you're, you're foreshadowing, kind of, we had that here. We talked about the fact that if we still wanted to put another PI levy on and, you know, to, for an amount that would assume what we had left, just the fund, the, kind of the basics, nothing more, nothing less, what was on the slides previously, we need about two mils. And if we pass that in '24, I talked about the fact that we'd still need to come right back now, because, you know, the loss of collection, the loss of the ability to reduce expenses out of the general fund almost immediately, we'd have to come back, back-to-back years in '25. And if we pushed it up to '26, we could, you know, we'd have to have a 6.8 mil levy. We talked about, now, you know, and now you're asking for even a larger tax increase. So these are just what we talked about. We talked about that you could do a 4.9 mil levy based on our current budget in '24. Issues that we talked about with '24, just to kind of rehash, is that if we were gonna do it in March, we had a quick turnaround, we had everything approved by December 20th. I didn't recommend that. The other issue that we have coming up, not that it's an issue, it's just the reality, I don't want to misspeak, is that we're going through the reevaluation this year. I'm projecting a 30% increase in valuation of properties. We are not at the floor, so our taxpayers won't see a 30% increase in the property tax that, in revenue to us, because we're above the floor. But, you know, that we will see an increase on that, on the inside millage that we have. So, you know, do we really want to have a levy? And this is a discussion that the board has to have. Do you really want to have a levy on the ballot and then have to explain in August, September and October, when those evaluations come out, to somebody that you're not getting a 30% increase on your taxes, even though your property values just went up 30%? It's just one more thing that you have to, like, navigate and educate your community on as well. If you wait till '25, which, if you remember, was my recommendation, you have a year to explain that, and we can show that. And I think, you know, I, I was asked by Mr. Massey, I think, last board meeting, what did I project in my forecast? And I said 30%. I said, "That's what the auditor told us that the range is gonna be? That's what I put in there." And I think I, he was somewhat surprised, I think, by that, but, you know, for me, if we're using our forecasts, as we communicate every time I give this, as it's a tool to evaluate where we're at financially, to not put what we think realistically what that valuation increase is going to be, would be, I wouldn't be doing my job as, as, as the CFO. That's how I believe. There's things in the state right now that are being discussed to, to change that and evaluate that, but that, we don't know that yet. What we know today is what we know, and we know that Jagger County just had a 29 and a half percent increase. It's fair to think that we're gonna be right on that mark or relatively close, and if I'm high, congratulation to everybody that's in the room, because you're not seeing that, you're seeing something lower. And if I'm low, I'm not that far off, I don't think. And again, you know, I think those are things that we have to include. So when you look at the projections that are in this from a revenue standpoint, that 30% increase on property valuation and the impact it's going to have on us is included in our numbers. So when you look at millage rates of 5.9 in '25, it assumes that we are going to see a 30% increase, so that millage isn't going to be what it is today. It's going to be what it would gain at that rate at 5.9 mils. So I explained that we would need about 5.9 mils in '25. And to Ms. Justling's point, and this is calendar year '25, not necessarily fiscal year '25, so if you pass it in calendar year '25, so that would be either the spring or the fall, November of '25, we wouldn't collect money in fiscal year '26 until half-collection, because of the way it works, right? Because '25, '26, school year is fiscal year '26, and you'd only get the collection in the March collection, which is the second half of fiscal year '26, and you won't see a full collection until fiscal year '27, because that's summer of '26 and spring of '27. And I'm happy to go over that with any board member who's new or, you know, just newer to the board, because it is confusing. It's like, it's crazy, because calendar year and fiscal years are not always the same. So, you know, think about spring collection of the fiscal year, so '26, we get, we collect, we collect taxes twice, basically. We get it early, in February, March, we get money, and then we get money again in kind of July, August. So because the fiscal year starts in July, you can see how it carries over. But that's why you see that, that on there as well. And the green just highlights when, the calendar year that we would pass the recommended If you wanted to wait at that time, I talked about until '26, you could do that, you just would need a higher levy to kind of get, and I was shooting for like a five-year levy cycle, because the average is three to five years, probably closer to three. We've been beyond that because of the redistricting, the, the things that we've done to, to reduce our expenses as our enrollment has changed. We've been able to extend those, well, 2016 was the last new money levy, so we're going on eight years already. And the prior one, before that, was 12 years, from 2004 to 2016.
It's still baffles me, coming from Central Iowa.
Yeah.
Literally, it was like, every other year, it seemed like districts down there were on the, on about. Now, part of that was due to growth and bond issues and then these sorts of things, but, you know, bond issue always was followed with an operating levy, because building a new school, you have to put people in there, and that operating levy had to be there. To, to have 12 in eight years is unbelievable.
Yeah. So I ultimately got to this slide, where I said, "Okay, I think it's the recommendation that we should shoot for '25," but I also felt that we could tighten our belts, continue to work to tighten our belts and cut $5 million ultimately by 2026, at least." Which brings us here to today. So Mr. Heath and I and the administrative team, again, because, you know, my role is not to make decisions, my role is to work with the superintendent and provide my opinion when he wants to take it, and he can choose not to, right? That's the beauty of being the superintendent. But then also, him giving me his plan, we'll work, because it is very collaborative, so it's, it's, I don't want to say, I don't want to assume that it's not, but the reality is, is you tell me what you want to see, I can plug it into the magic box and spit out the results and evaluate it and give you my financial opinion. And it's just that opinion, but ultimately, oh, someone's gotta be to practice my apologies. But ultimately, it's, you know, what are we trying to accomplish? It goes back to the strategic plan, to, you know, the, the learning piece and to the safety piece, and our resources, it all obviously ties together. safety piece and our resources, it all obviously ties together, the synergy there. So, what we did is we went and discussed how to make reductions, um, to try not to impact the actual learning that's going on in the classroom. That, you know, that's where we started. Because we're not at a point yet, I think, financially where we have to start, you know, cutting off appendages, as I like to refer to the analogy, because, you know, those are things that you do when the community, um, voices that they don't want to support the educational environment. And we had the, the issue that was passed pretty convincingly for the renewal. You know, the PI levy did fail, uh, and it, it was relatively close, uh, but the reality is, is, you know, people, you know, didn't wanna pay additional money to, to support the, the plan that we had, so we have to continue to adjust that. We have to respect the voters' wishes in that and, and make that adjustment. I think there's positives in, to what we heard from the voters throughout that. We've listened to them, we've made adjustments on what types of things we're gonna be spending money on going into the future. And I think we need to continue to tighten our belts, so we did that by taking all the safety, uh, pieces off that were not necessary, safety upgrades that we needed. We felt that our blended and balanced learning from, from, from that standpoint, if you're looking for what the label relates to, it's, it's a budget that Mr. Lynch has to help continue to refine our learning spaces, uh, for furniture and create other additional learning spaces that is a result of the Stride A grant. When we got the, you know, sixteen million dollars between Kirtland and Mentor, I think it was, uh... We got thirteen point one here, but there was money that went to Kirtland, so the total grant itself was almost sixteen million dollars. But the reality, uh, was that we had to show sustainability, and we've done that by reducing costs, and we use some of that money to continue to sustain that, that area at K-12, um, but because we have renovated all of our learning spaces, we feel like that we're in a very good spot, so we can slow that down for two years. So, that's where that, like, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in twenty-five and that about four-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand in this year and three-hundred-and-fifty in twenty-six is, we're, we're pausing because we feel like we're in a good spot and we can, we can stop doing that for a little bit and still be okay, and we're not creating any sort of, um, violation of beliefs or putting us in a situation where it's gonna be more costly in the future to do, to do something. Um, it's not like a roof, right? Like, a roof needs to be replaced because sooner or later, it's either gonna, like, start to leak and let rain on kids, or you're gonna have a cla, you know, there's things that you have to do. Our, our environment's in a, in a really good spot, so we can kind of deter that. We did wanna save about fifty thousand dollars just kind of as a, um, insurance, so that if something breaks or we have to replace things, because, as you, we all know, someone may steal a, a front-end loader and run into a door. And then you gotta replace said door. Almost unbelievable. Almost unbelievable.
When would that ever happen?
The other area that we started to look at, because it's such a big purchase and it really could fall, as you've heard me say, a, a lot into the PI, was buses. We started having discussions internally, and we started looking at the bus replacement schedule, started to dig into that, and ultimately, I think the discussion that Mr. Heath and I had is, that was probably an area, as we've continued to get smaller and smaller and smaller from an enrollment standpoint, that we probably haven't, like, checked on. We've been so worried about staff and facilities and redistricting that we, you know, we maintain our fleet to make sure that it's functional, but, you know, what about the size of that, the replacement schedule? And looking at that, talking to our new coordinator of transportation, having discussions with the board members, Ms. Payne, Mr. Apollo, everybody here giving me feedback, um, shared that data with you. We feel that we use, we have, uh, we're still working out what is the amount of buses that we should have as a spare set for our fleet. We're doing a research on that, so I don't have an answer for that today. Uh, I think we can reduce our spares, which will have cost savings from storage, maintenance, insurance, so there'll be soft and hard cost savings that will happen, and that's hard to quantify at this point, so we know what that's going to be. But we also realize that looking at, okay, what we have been doing for replacements of the fifty or fifty-one so buses that we use, we're in a good spot that our oldest buses are, like, twelve to ten years old, the average life expectancy of a bus is twelve to fifteen, we've been shooting for fifteen years, um, and we have already ordered five buses this year that will be, God knows when they'll come in. But theoretically, they usually came in in the summer, so we could re, but the ones that we ordered last year just came in, and only four of the five came in, and the four that came in are missing some things, so they're not in the road yet, that's a whole, like, another, just post-COVID fun piece that we deal with. But that being said, we can take our oldest buses, so next year, our oldest buses will be eleven years, that will buy us, I think, three years of not replacing those buses because we have a great mechanic group here that helps keep our buses running. They would be in line with our historical average of when we wanted our buses, so, uh, we are recommending through discussion that we've had, that we wouldn't replace buses in twenty-five and twenty-six, and then I budgeted one in twenty-seven. Probably just because I'm conservative and I didn't wanna be, like, too unsafe with that because, God only knows something's gonna, you know, again, you never know what's gonna happen, right? Tortada comes through and we lose a bus and then we don't have a budget, and then we're, it's an expense that we don't have included. But, and then my recommendation is, is that we go to a cycle of buses that we replace three one-year, four next year, three, four, so you're replacing on average three and a half. And that will keep our fifty buses on a cycle of about fifteen years, closer to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles, which is the, the life expectancy, um, that we're, we're trying to, to maintain. And then we would continue to evaluate that over time and, and, and make sure that, you know, we're not having breakages, but if we have enough spares, and that's why you carry spares, it should never, we should always be okay. So, we, we've included those in, and I said five million dollars by twenty-six, we've accumulated three-point-five million dollars in savings additional to the five million dollars that we shared already. But what I would also say is you can see in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, because this is all within the five-year forecast, this isn't ten million dollars a year, it's, it's ten million dollars over five years. We also have additional one-point-five million in savings in twenty-seven, twenty-eight that we didn't have previously. So, we've, we've kind of exceeded in the terms of it, but Mr. Heath and I are still looking, on having discussions on where can we find additional savings of about one-point-five to hit that five billion by twenty-six.
Can I ask a couple of questions, Bill?
Yep.
So, when I had emailed you about, you know, us getting five new buses every year and then we, we talked on the phone, um, because I knew about the routes, because I've asked previous questions about how many routes do we have in total, so I knew that there was kind of like a discrepancy between us having so many buses, I think you said seventy-nine, and then we only had forty-eight bus routes going out daily. So, a couple other questions just kind of surrounding this. Do we have insurance on the ones that are just kind of sitting around, and are they comprehensive coverage or are they full coverage?
Insurance is the same for every bus, whether it's regularly on, on the road or not, because if it gets on the road and it doesn't have the coverage that we need and there's an accident, we're, it's more about the lives that are inside the bus rather than the insurance of the bus.
But if we have thirty, like, almost thirty extra buses, you know, that might be something we could look into.
Oh, we would, yeah, that's what I was saying, we would have savings, but if we reduce the number of spares from twenty-nine to, let's say, fifteen.
Okay.
And I'm just throwing out a number, because that's what we're trying to figure out, what that, what that sweet spot is, uh, from a practicality standpoint, because it goes to, you know, how many, uh, buses do you typically have out that need to be repaired because they're having an issue? How many field trips do you have going out? So, it's not, there's no standard, like, it's ten percent, five percent, or, you know, twenty percent. I think we agree that we have too many, and then, you know, if we reduce those, you get pennies on the dollars to sell them through auction. We're not gonna make a lot of money there, but we would have some savings in reducing our cost on...
Insurance.
Insurance, maintenance, um, other small costs that could equate to another twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year total.
Okay, so the insurance is, if you're saying twenty-five to twenty thou...
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, not, it's, it's...
More minimal.
Yeah, when you, again, and this is the issue, right?
The purchase, right?
Yeah. It's, it's the hundred-and-forty thousand dollars to purchase the bus, it's, you know, keeping the hours, and again, how are we gonna quantify this? Keeping that bus maintained.
Right.
Checking, you know, checking out it regularly, so you're, there's time that goes into that. So, there's a lot of, that's why I was saying, soft costs are hard costs. The hard cost on that savings is going to be, you know, we don't have to insure it, get it licensed, get it inspected. The soft costs are maintaining, just the, the, having that there, the space that's there, any fuel that would be in there when it's being used, so on and so forth.
And the... The other piece that I'll toss in with that to Ms. Payne is, um, had some conversations this week with our transportation supervisor, obviously, we've talked about the new routing software that we're gonna have in place here, um, and really trying to be a little bit more efficient in our routing. We'll be taking a, a close look at our starting and ending times at our buildings to see if they're, if we make an adjustment with maybe one building, will that help our routing a little bit more, um, to be more efficient, especially Memorial's killing us right now because it's, it's always that one route that goes out to, uh, you know, Concord that...
It's my route.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's why I'm not looking at you. But it's that one route that continues to be late all the time. You know, are there some things that we can do to shift things around a little bit and be more efficient in that, in that regard? The other thing that that may do for us as well is look at the, the efficiency and the reduction of routes that we would have to cover too. So, that's something that we're gonna take a really close look at as we move forward. The, the other thing from a procedural standpoint that we're probably gonna be doing here, uh, probably right before spring break, is, um, asking our, uh, families to give us their intentions with transportation. We did that over the summer and that saved quite a few, but it still didn't grasp everybody. So, if we start that process a little bit earlier, get that worked into our routing, that'll allow us to be more efficient as well. Because one of the things we continue to see on a daily basis is looking at, um, you know, some of the high school buses that roll in and, and are maybe half-filled. Well, you know, how can we be more efficient in that, you know, and, and be able to pull more of those students off the routes that we know aren't riding on a daily basis, but because we haven't been informed that they're not gonna be driving, riding the bus, we, we still have to route for them. So, looking through our procedures and how we do that will be another efficiency for us that hopefully will, again, it's not gonna be huge cost savings, but it will, it will help us be more efficient from a, a monetary standpoint and from a, a service standpoint in the future.
And I had another question too, um, because when I realized there was such a big gap after you got the email back from Heather, it, I asked for the data for all of the, all of the buses to see the mileage and the years and everything, and then I was surprised because it looks like, from what you said, all the five buses that we auction every year are based on year, not mileage. Is there a reason for that? Because I, I noticed a pretty big discrepancy, probably because we have so many sitting around that we weren't using, of old buses that had actually less miles, it looked like, than newer buses. So, is there a reason why we do that instead?
I can't speak to the reason, I mean, I, in the brief discussion that I had with Ms. Weisen as a follow-up to that, she said that, because they typically have the most mileage, and I think they look at the body, how much repair that the, how much time they're spending on keeping those buses into the fleet and keeping them useful, um, so it comes down to a, a kind of a variety of things, to be quite honest.
So, it's not just the, the year? Because there was a lot that I saw that were like, "Oh, this is older," you know, but the mileage was actually less than a newer one, which would make sense because we have so many that were not being utilized. So, I don't know if we could look into that.
Some of those potentially have, like, special education buses too.
There weren't very many of those, I don't think, but...
And I, I can't remember, I haven't had a chance to really dig deep into that, uh, that spreadsheet to see that, but I know that's one of the other considerations that Heather and I talked about in our meeting this week was, you know, obviously, special education continues to, to grow, and, and those routes continue to grow, and, and we're probably looking at a couple more routes that are gonna be needed next year as well. So, when we were talking about the spares, that was the other thing I, I wanted to make sure we were considering too. You know, what, what's the number of spares that we have for our, our regular buses versus our special education buses and our wheelchair capabilities, and what are the specific needs so that we do have the, the same proportion of spares available for those buses as well? So, that'll be something that we'll have to kind of dig into that spreadsheet a little bit more, just to make sure we've got that clarified, uh, clarified in there too.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad to see the reduction because when I was talking with Mr. Wade on the phone, I was, the assumption was that we use all seventy or so buses, and then I remember you saying that about the private schools only have two buses going, and they had forty-something, and so I think that's, that's a wise plan. And then also updating, like you said, the actual purchase plan going forward, um, and looking at the buses that we do auction and making sure they are kind of like the worst ones, you know? So, not just the oldest.
I'm confident that they are, I, I, you know, I think it's, it's a matter of, because, you know, sometimes you have a two thousand and four bus that still runs great, even though it has high mileage, and then you have one, I know we experienced this at my previous district when I was superintendent, that it was a two thousand and thirteen, it was rusted out.
Right.
You know, the bottom's out, you know, you're spending a lot of time keeping that dysfunctional, so it's a, it's a multitude of things that come into place because some of the newer products aren't made with the same resiliency as even our older products.
And I think some of that will air out too with the new plan because when you have so many extras, there, you're not using this, the, you know, you're kind of picking and choosing which ones to use instead of, when you don't have all those extras, then it'll, you'll see it probably will match then, the mileage with the year going forward.
Yeah, we're really relying heavily on our transportation department to assist us with those decisions because obviously they're the experts. You know, for me, from a financial perspective and an American, so I can, I can, pretty quick, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be the most practical standpoint when they're going out to drive the bus and all of a sudden...
Right.
There's nothing there that works because the treasurer didn't care to listen to anybody, just wanted to save some dollars.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you talked to her, and I think this is a good plan.
I had a question. What, um, I was really surprised when, just see that, and is this, is this something, you've been here longer, um, is that typical to have that many sitting buses?
And that was always an area that transportation was kind of its own bailiwick, and so that's not something we delved into specifically that was always delegated to the treasurer to, to handle that along with the superintendent.
So, what I did get back from Ms. Weisen, there, there's not really a report that we can run that shows the history, but she was able to go back and kind of see how many spares that we've had over the last few years, and it's been about those. We've always had about the same number in our fleet.
Okay.
I don't actually know spare-wise because routes, number of routes can change from year to year, but we've always had about that many buses in our fleet.
Okay. And then, do, you know, you, there, you had said, I, we saw two-hundred-thousand miles was the limit, and then some things were three-hundred. Do the, do our mechanics have an opinion on, you know, like, certain, so they can say...
That's what I've asked Ms. Weisen and her team, because I actually put it back on them to say, "Provide us a recommendation and a justification on how many spares you think you should have and why."
Okay.
And they're trying to dig into the industry standards too, you know, and, and not just rely on their own expertise, but, you know, what, what's out there, what do other districts do? What the, what's...
The consultant from the state or ESC said, you know, you should, buses that are sixteen years or older should be retired from your fleet, and it's about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles.
And you said this, assuming we, we reduce by as much as we're allowed to, can you give a ballpark estimation of what, what kind of savings it would look like and not, and not buying new ones? Or is that...
Uh, the savings that I would estimate are the ones that are on the, on the slide.
And that doesn't include the insurance because it's so minimal, you said the...
Correct, and I don't, until I know exactly what we're gonna go to from a percentage of spares, it's hard to even quantify that. So, once I have that information, I can try to quantify the insurance savings. Everything else will be almost impossible to quantify, to be quite honest, because we're not gonna know how much time they were spending hourly, weekly, monthly to, to, to do that.
Because in the meantime, if we do have like twenty, you know, thirty, and we wanna save ten, and we've got twenty sitting around, you could save a little bit on the insurance by looking into just the comprehensive only if it's not being driven and you still have, you know, extra just in case.
Yeah, but again, we're not, I mean, it's, again, it's not so much, it's about the lives and the bod, it's the more the bodily harm is where we, I mean, that's for us, that's, that's where we're spending our money.
Is it different coverage than, like, personal auto? Is that, is that what you mean, like, with personal, like, if I have a car sitting, I just leave it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, we have a coverage for the fleet, yes.
You have to get...
And it says, and we have so much per accident and then aggregate, right? So, it's, there's like a limit to that.
So, are you recommending also auctioning five a year still or no? This is just, we're not gonna purchase five?
We would auction the number we purchased. So, to write, so let's just say we, to right-size, and so next year, we would then say, "Hey, we have twenty-nine extra. We only need fifteen."
Okay.
We would auction the fourteen worst as determined by our department because that's their area of expertise. And we would then auction those off, uh, and we would then no longer insu, obviously have to insure them, and then we wouldn't obviously auction anything. And then we wouldn't obviously auction anything off again until if we purchased one in '27.
Okay.
When that bus came in, you would, so anything in equals the amount out. So the year that we would-
So once we right size, then it'll be one to one.
Right. And is the auction, if we, let's say, like, do we get rid of 14 of them next year? Is that in that number or is that, like, are we anticipating a number for that or do we get not very much when we auction?
I would say the $70,000 for 14 buses at about $5,000 a bus.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to buy a bus?
I might. I mean, people flip them nowadays and they go and sell them for like a hundred grand.
I'll sell it to you for 6,500.
I know Dr. Glatton wants to turn one into a food truck.
Yeah.
Within the career path.
We'll charge him 10.
Yeah. That works.
Twelve hundred, perfect, 12. So, I mean, yeah, so that, those, that revenue again is not included in that, those savings. Again, and because my philosophy is always share what you know. And I don't know that yet because I don't know what the recommendation is going to be.
Sure.
And, you know, I don't really need to know that officially till I update you in May from a May forecast standpoint. And, and that's work that we're working on now.
Mrs. Payne, maybe we'll get the sensory bus we talked about.
I know. I was thinking about that sensory bus. I could have still come out and show it to everybody.
Maybe we could use an old bus, yeah.
So I included-
Actually, we couldn't.
Yeah, see?
Let's get this bus a moving. To keep this bus moving, I'm gonna go to my next slide because people are gonna say, I'm the one who was talking too much. The summary kind of page that you might want to look at from a standpoint, just of, of the extra savings that we've now included is here. You can see here that if you compare it to our November forecast, here's the savings in the respective areas each year. That equates to over the life of the forecast, an additional 4.75 cumulative in savings. That's how I got to the $10 million, if you're checking my math. Our updated kind of litmus test of, you know, color coding shows that those diamonds are a little bit higher in that yellow area respectively. And we're no longer in the red, we're in the pink area now towards the end. Again, here's just the November one right back, just to, so you don't have to flip back 15 slides. I just put it in there for you so you can have that quick visual cue. Again, for those in the audience, boom, boom, see that? Not much of a difference, but there is a slight difference. While we all think $10 million is a lot of money, it is a lot of money. However, when you're looking at it over a five-year forecast and a budget that's 114 and then towards the end closer to 130 million dollars, it's, it's not a huge, it doesn't, it doesn't solve our issues. It helps us, right? It helps us in a much better spot, but it doesn't solve our issues. Our cash on hand goes from 28, it goes up to 28 days and 28 up from 10. So we've added about 18 days. Still kind of that 26 to 27 where we're falling below the, where we don't want to be. That's again, we get to that point and we're starting to make some significant cuts. You know, staffing programs, adding additional fees, reducing services for transportation. Those are all things that then become on the table. So if you're looking for gloom and doom, if we can't pass new money, you know, getting into 26, 27, that's when you start to say, okay, how do we make significant savings? And now you're talking about, people are starting to feel and experience those savings because you don't have transportation if you live within two miles or you don't have high school transportation or you're reducing the amount of extracurriculars that you have or your class sizes are going up drastically because you have to reduce staff, so on and so forth. So kind of going back to what I used to kind of demonstrate to everybody where we're at when we're looking at the levy scenario piece. This is the updated one that shows all the savings that we've discussed. Note that in '26, we're still about $1.4 million higher than we would want to be. So that, that number needs to come down. And that could come down because we're gonna spend less based on this, because the savings that we're projecting for this year are not in my expenditures. I'm still assuming it's what I forecasted in November because we won't know that till June when we close out the fiscal year. And we might only spend 13 million. So there's our million and a half. And then, you know, we've, we've achieved our, our immediate goal that I set up. And I'll remind everyone why I set up that goal here in a second. There's a lot of colors on this, so let me kind of explain. I added the turquoise lines because I wanted to show you the difference between the line above it and if we reduce the additional $1.4 million as, is our goal. So you can see if we pass a, and then from my analytic software, I know that we need to, if we go for a levy in '25, calendar year '25, so that would be a year from now in May or November. We'd have two, two bites at the apple, so to speak. And we will need to pass a levy somewhere based on our current forecast between 4.84 mils and 5.0, or actually six. It's six mils, but I don't use six because 5.99 is-
It's better.
It's a marketing strategy, per my MBA classes, I think. 99 is better than a whole number. I don't know why, but people like it. So that's what you get for sending me to school. The, so where it really is, is the white number above it. But if you assume the assumption that we're going to continue to reduce to 5 million as we've, I've tasked us to, the numbers in turquoise are the numbers where we would ultimately try to land. Or in your cases, it looks more bluish-green than it does on the screen. But the reason why we were trying to shoot for $5 million is because you can see, again, when we have our first half collection in '26, we still are deficit spending. But if you take the million and a half out or 1.4 we're not, we're at 606,000. And then you see when we get the full collection in '27, we actually have a surplus of 1.4. So now it gets us, that was to help us get us to a five-year lifecycle. So if we just ask for revenue and didn't change our expense pattern, we're not gonna, our levy cycle's not going to last very long. So it, it's, it's really, it's, as I always say, and hopefully the public who's here has heard me say this, it's never just ask for more money. It's, it's a combination of reducing your expenses and, you know, getting additional revenue so that we can kind of stretch that dollar as far as we can to, to meet the goals that we have through our strategic plan. So if you look at the upper end of that, the next slide, kind of the same color pattern works. You can see that we get a little bit further out. We're not probably going for new money again until 2030 instead of 2029 here. But that's a 5.99 mil levy. So for all intensive purposes, six mils. And that six mils or just under six mils generates about 16.7, 16.8 million dollars a year annually.
So we have to raise enough money to run a levy campaign basically within one year from now?
We, we, let me clarify. We as a district- Yeah, so levy committee would have to raise enough money.
Dollars would have to be raised to fund a committee on our behalf.
Correct. The district spends no money on campaigning for pro or anti-levy. It would be counter to if they'd be anti-levy, but we can't say yes or no. We just can give facts.
Yeah.
So the committee, if the levies put on, would have to make sure that they had money to be able to, to do that. The district standpoint, from a factual piece of information, be very clear, we spend zero money on a levy. But we show here that it would generate about 16.8. And you can see that we would not deficit spend into '28 where we would be deficit spending. And that's how I came up with the $5 million number to give us another year of having more revenue than we're spending. And then '29 and '30, and again, '29 and '30 are outside of our five-year forecast. You know, our forecast only goes to '28 now, so just remind everybody. So '29 and '30 are like down the road, very general assumptions of increases on expenditures and things like that. Based on our trends of spending that we see in the five years that we're obligated by law to show.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
The upgrade to the lighting, I didn't see that in here. So is it assumed that, because I know you had mentioned that before, it's like 2 million to upgrade all of them to LED. Were all agreeing to put that on the back burner, is that what?
Correct, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. Yeah, correct. Anything that isn't needed isn't included. And then the other thing of that is, is if you wanted to say, hey, Mr. Heath or Mr. Wade, run a scenario where if we brought all that safety stuff that Mr. Heath just cut out and you wanted to bring it back in '26, '27 and '28, it needs to be added back in. So none of that's, I mean, this is, this is what we've taken out, never coming back. So, I mean, we have to be very clear on that. So that, this, to, to justify, this isn't, you know, when we had the PI levy, we knew we needed 2.5 to, to support the plan that we had. We've now reduced that to the bare minimum, still funding that stuff out of the general fund, but only funding roofs, pavement and, and the things that are needed to ensure a safe environment that we have. But nothing else is added in.
So as a board, if we decided we want the safety vestibules, we want sensors on doors, which were recommended to us, we would need to ask you to run some new things and see what-
Correct.
-our numbers are because this isn't, you pass a levy and then you can do this.
Or the alter, yes, that's, you're 100% correct. Or the alternative to be, in the world that I used to live in, is, okay, that's a priority. Find things that aren't a priority so that we can add that back in. And what can we not do, right?
So like, the bussing scenario, that was my email to you as well. I was like, okay, so we would be saving if we didn't buy five new buses for these many years. We'd be saving, could we move some of that over to the safety to possibly do some of those things? So if we as a board decided?
You could. But I mean, again, this is, this is what I want everyone to realize. When I run these scenarios for you, I'm assuming that bus savings is a savings. Transferring a savings, and I have this discussion all the time with our administrative team. Well, we don't have to necessarily cut those teachers, we can do something else with them. And then you're not saving anything. You're, you're not adding anything, right? Because you didn't, you know, you, you didn't, we didn't add somebody to do middle school teaming. We just chose not to cut those teachers to, to have the savings. So it's, you're not really saving that. So-
So you already have those buses in here?
Yes, that, all that stuff that we've shared tonight is in here. So if you wanted to say, I want you to do the safety and I'm just going to assume you're going to cut something else to give to it, we would, we'd still be in the same spot, so it shows that, right? So if you, if everything, if there's an equilibrium of sorts, former chemistry teacher, whatever goes in has to come, something else has to come out.
Right.
Then this still works. But I want the board to understand too, if you say, hey, we want to reduce class sizes at the elementary level in fourth and fifth grade and to do that, you gotta add 10 teachers, well, that's going to be $720,000 a year that you're adding every year because each new teacher that we hire, all in, is about $72,000, $73,000 to do that.
But I think to your point too earlier, which I agree with about, you know, safety and the insurance with the bus situation, I think to a certain degree that applies to some of the safety stuff. You know, if we all feel like there's, I'm not saying I have one picked out. But if there is something that we're like, ooh, this is a problem in this school, it's a safety issue, then maybe we do prioritize that.
Yeah, I, I would think I would, usually that happens, okay? So that, again, the educator means we continue to inform ourselves as a board. That would come from our superintendent or through his cabinet to him to say, hey, like, this is an issue, we need to do this. And then he would bring it to you guys and then you would agree. And then you'd say, hey, Mr. Wade, run that. And what's that do to our forecast? Because we want to support our superintendent.
Okay.
You know, that, that typically in my experience hasn't come from the board saying that they want that. It's the superintendent making a recommendation and then the board giving him the approval or the authority to then say, yeah, we gotta, we gotta account for that expense, CFO, run that number to do that. So we would, we would, we would do that. And again, I try to be the person who's getting people to think that, that there's always a cost to doing that, not, and it can be annoying at times, right? I mean, we have those discussions in our internal teams, but the reality is, is that's my role. You know, I don't sit in that seat anymore. So my, my role is to say, hey, look, there's a cost to doing that. So either we gotta cut something out that we no longer need or we need to add that in and see how it trickles out.
And I think we have a safety, you know, committee too. So maybe some of these conversations could be shuffled into there.
Yeah.
Just because we're kind of talking about planning for things, I know one thing that's weighing heavy on me is that we have the loss of the ESR funds that is a reduction in a lot of our support, our, our teachers that are there as more tutors. And we've seen such great gains and especially like our reading program and our math program because we have them and with, with those positions leaving now. And I know this isn't a question that you need to answer for me tonight, but if you guys can look and see what is the plan to go forward on how we would continue to staff? Are we looking at this support isn't there anymore?
Yes. Just to answer your question very succinctly. Those 25 staff members who are not paid out of the general fund, they're not even included in here.
So I understand that the 25 staff are gone, but I guess I want to know how we are going to, because the need isn't gone.
Right.
So how do we, especially with new dyslexia requirements, how do we go, how are we going to carry out the screening and implementing those interventions for kids? Is it going to fall on the classroom teacher, the intervention specialist? Are, are we going to need to be looking at hiring staff? Because if we don't have a plan for that, we can't budget for it. And I just, I just want to keep that to the forefront and I'm really concerned about that.
I can get a, kind of a report of what our curriculum department's been doing to get prepared for that.
Thank you.
And present that at our February meeting.
And I would assume other districts might be in the same situation because all of them are-
Oh, anything you read right now talks about the ESR cliff, financial cliff.
I mean, I don't know if there's something for the ESCs, you know, anything like that, those bigger discussions.
Some of the districts didn't use their ESR money for tutors and support staff. They used it for actually like materials and things. So they're not seeing that because they didn't use it towards actual staff.
They call it the bloodletting.
I think OSB actually just issued something about it.
The revenue bloodletting that's going to occur across the nation because of all the money that was pumped into schools, that's no longer going to be there. And they've used it whether for staffing or to offset costs to purchase materials that, how do you maintain that now that that revenue stream's no longer there? And you're gonna see cash reserves just drop like monumentally across the country.
So knowing that, I just want us to think about how we're going to continue. Levels that we have seen through data have made a difference in the education of our kids. So if it's gone and, and we don't have it, what, what do we need to do? What do we need to plan for? Are we looking at, are we, do we have a greater need for a levy then, a bigger levy, a sooner levy? I, I don't know, but I, I need the information from you guys.
Because the other concern I have and, and you would know better than anybody here, that if over these last three years, IEPs have been generated for students who have now identified needs and now protocols to meet those needs, that's a legal document. It's not optional. And each of our resource teachers can, their caseload has to be humanly possible. So there may be unmet needs waiting for a solution.
With increased class sizes on top of it.
Yeah.
Well, our enrollment study too that we did, when, what, do you remember the month that that was done?
Is that February?
I think it's a year ago, I must sound the news.
Because I wonder too, I mean, I don't know when the, I think they had us kind of at a plateau, is that right?
Yeah, like this, this year, I think we were down one-
Hundred, about 100 kids.
And then next year, we have a bigger graduating class this year and then a smaller freshman class coming in.
So I was talking about that.
And then we plateau and then it, it's almost like a little tick up.
So it's like- By '29, based on, because we talked about this too. The, this, the analytic system that I use to evaluate our budgets and everything else has a built-in feature now that I would almost recommend we don't waste district dollars moving forward on doing another study. Because there are, my system does it. And we can look at it and it's, it's real-time data, it's based on a similar practice. And we can manipulate it, have a little more control over it. So I think what, what we've talked about, I think we're in agreement is that that's what we most likely do unless it becomes noticeably like wrong consistently and then- unless it becomes noticeably like wrong consistently, and then maybe we gotta like spot-check it. But the, we can reduce that cost, but also have the real-time data. But I think what we're seeing from a midpoint on our data, that I just ran it the other day, because it was just on a PD that I shared, if you, as I know you guys do read the stuff that we have in our systems, it was on our Friday, that we're supposed to go back up to about where we're at last year. So we're actually going to drop, and then we're going to start to see a, a kind of a leveling off and kind of be, yeah, so we're, from a, from a staffing standpoint, and an enrollment standpoint, we're going to be about, give or take, where we're at. So you, you know, the question's going to become, if, again, everything that we're doing, we have to realize that there's a cost to it somehow. It's either, you know, you're going to have a cost of, an opportunity cost, because you don't do it. You're going to have a cost because you're adding staff, or you're going to have a cost because you're getting rid of something that you've ad hocly done to justify supporting that. And, and I think the reality is, is that's where you and the team are very good at, looking at that and kind of having those discussions.
And, and to Ms. Jesslyn's point too, I would, we just spent a lot of time over break looking at our, our preschoolers that are coming into kindergarten next year, and the number of units that we will need for, for those students, just because the needs have shifted. And these are students with legal documents, now that our IEPs that we have to service in a different way. It, it's going to shift kind of how that staffing works too. You know, while our overall enrollment may be plateauing now, that, that special education number continues to rise, which kind of shifts the way we have to staff our, our buildings too. And then, quite honestly, the other issue is space. We went around to a bunch of elementary schools, looking at spaces, going, okay, we potentially could need three additional units, based on the needs that these seventeen kindergarteners have next year. And depending on how many of those students are students with autism, that may determine whether or not we only need two, or we need three, because of the, the numbers that we have to hit. So looking at the spaces in all of our buildings is going to be another component that we have to take into consideration. And, and again, that's why we've got the little fifty-thousand-dollar buffer in there too, because if we have to look at a space and do a couple of tweaks in that space to, to make it a unit classroom, we may have to do that here this summer.
Is it feasible to utilize some of the unused space at Garfield to meet that specific need, especially when those students are very young?
Yeah, and, and we've talked a lot about Garfield here recently. You know, it's, it's a building that we've just been maintaining for the last few years, since we did all the, the closing of, of buildings. We haven't actually done anything to enhance or upgrade that building. Here in the near future, again, from our, our needs, from a special education standpoint, there, there might be some space considerations that we would have to take a look at there, and we, we may have to change our philosophy as a board, in our approach to Garfield too. Now, there are some things that, that we probably need to do to maintain that here this summer, if I'm remembering our, our last business operations conversation. So we may have to spend a little bit of money there to, to make sure that that's well-maintained and, and ready to go for next year. But from a programming standpoint, I think that's a big thing that we're going to have to really take a close look at, with the needs that we're seeing coming out of the pandemic still.
Is that an issue to have, let's say, a couple of units, where they're not in their peer settings?
Depends on the, yeah, depends on the IEP. Could be.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's where the creativity comes in a little bit too. We have to see what those, those documents say. We have to figure out, okay, what is the best scenario for them? Yeah, again, from a school's safety standpoint, there are some things from, you know, from some of the behaviors that we're seeing, that, you know, just an alternative setting might be something that's needed for some of these students too. And, and that's what we're trying to consider as we're looking at these. So, you know, you may have the learning part of that IEP, but what's the behavioral piece to that? And, and again, from a staffing standpoint, okay, is it, is it a learning specialist that we need to bring in? Or is it a behavior specialist that we need to bring in? So those are some of the staffing little nuances that we have to continue to play with as we're, as we're looking at the needs of all of our kids.
One of the things I just wanted to point out, because I forgot to mention it on one of the previous slides, on the very last row, it shows the days, days of cash on hand, just so you kind of, again, just as a reference point, so you have it. So if you're looking at this later, you're wondering what those numbers are. It does say to the far left, you know, adjusted days cash on hand. But I think that's also a good litmus test for the board, from just a practical standpoint of where we're at. And you can see that if we go for five-point-nine in twenty-five, you know, the thing I'll point out is that, if you look at the very last column, and you look at the bottom three rows, the thirty-five-point-four and the forty-two-point-three, by cutting that one-point-four additional by twenty-six, it saves us almost seven million dollars over the course of the rest of that. You know, that, that shows, that demonstrates to the board, the more you, the sooner you save, the bigger impact that has. So, you know, remember that. I mean, it, it's important to, it's an important concept philosophically to be cognizant of. You know, sometimes it's like, hey, you don't really want to make that tough decision, but if you're going to make the tough decision anyways, make it now, because it's going to have a bigger impact going forward. And then you can see that that puts us at a hundred-and-thirty-two days. So that, I mean, now you're looking at one, two, three, four, five, maybe six years even before that. You know, if you go for the five-point-nine-nine in twenty-five, that you'd have to do that. The high end of, if you were to pass a levy this year, so obviously that would be in November, if you're looking at that, to do that, I just wanted to show that to you. The upper end of that would be the low end of twenty-five, so that'd be the four-point-eight-four. And you can kind of see how that plays out. Again, it gets you five years, you're, you know, you're looking in twenty-nine again, and a hundred-and-thirty-nine days cash on hand, to potentially pass that. Assuming every single assumption that we make, and we don't change anything, and all those kind of discussions we just had play out. Again, this is just to give you a reference point, to, to ponder, and to start to ask those other questions that you're, you're bringing up today, is if, you know, if we do want to have intervention tutors at every building that does math and reading instead of two or three, you know, whatever the, the plan is now, you know, what, what do you have to not do? Or what, you know, what does that look like, if that's what he's going to recommend? And if he brings that back, you know, what is that going to do? So those are all things that we need to start discussing, and, and having those pieces so that I can go into, make the adjustments, and show you what that looks like. Because the last thing you want to do is not plan and not foreshadow, and then ask for five mils, and then it only lasts three years. Or, you know, you, it wasn't enough, or you didn't reduce other areas, right? That, you know, that we wanted to do. The other piece of this that I will say, that I think that's just, that's it for the presentation that I pointed, that it considers, that, we talked about this in November. You know, this doesn't include going back out and trying to get another PI levy into the future at a, at a lesser rate. And then again, you would still then be able to remove those expenses from the general fund. This, this kind of funds, continues to fund things as we've done, but at a, at a much reduced rate, based on the cuts that Mr. Heath has recommended, based on his evaluation discussions that our internal team has had.
When the strategic plan is gathering segments of the community in those four areas, if that's where you're going to keep it, to those four, which for sake of discussion seem pretty reasonable, that might be an excellent place to get feedback on safety preferences, curricular preferences, facilities, all of that, and could help guide us.
I think that's a good point.
I think that's a fantastic point. As someone who's done strategic planning, and we use it so well here, that's why, again, we asked, based, you know, if we had that discussion, the recommendation of waiting until twenty-five is most ideal, because then you'll have that data. And then we can add all those things into our May or November forecast. And then we have a year to plan and look at that, right? We're not rushed, we're going through some very serious dialogue, internally, externally, the new board, continuing to adjust based on what we heard at the last election. And again, if, everything that we do, that when we talk, I always use the, you know, the strategic plan, does it, does it meet that? That's, you know, and that's, that's kind of where I, and it's not often that it doesn't. But if it's going to shift because of the work that you're doing, if, just from a financial perspective, it makes sense then. Okay, let's, this is the initial discussion of this. This isn't done, this document never is done, we always are looking at things. It would behoove us to, okay, even if it's after May, we can take that, have another work session in June, July, put it in there, see what it's like, and, and go from there.
Do we have a, a separate, like, work session for the strategic planning? Because I think all of us have had questions, and want to make sure, you know, and we're all kind of like, yeah.
It's funny, we, because had conversation with legal counsel today, just as we're going through this strategic planning process, and, and how, how we involve the board, and do it from a legal standpoint too. And, and part of the recommendation there was, maybe we have a separate work session with our board and our consultants, whoever those, whoever we decide on here this week, to have that, that conversation, so that, again, it's in a public setting. It's an official meeting, but it's also part of our strategic planning process too. The, the other part was, again, we, we want to make sure we're real careful with the number of board members that we would have that might be participating in some of the other stakeholder meetings. He said, quite honestly, it might be best just to not have anybody there, and let everybody kind of hear what's going on, and, and feel free to talk. And then, you know, the, the facilitators can report back out. He said, but when we do gather that board input, he said, it probably would behoove us to do that in, in a work session like this, with that facilitator, so that we can really make sure that we're getting all of our thoughts on what that direction's going to be here for the next three to five years, five to seven years.
Could you?
Depends on how many years I've got with STRS, whatever that is. But, you know, to build that out, so that, you know, we, we've got that direction, so we can continue to, to move the district forward, the, the way that we want that collectively here as a group. So I think that's the way we'll approach that, this plan.
Do you, you know, like, how are, I just want to make sure that whatever, whoever is involved in that, that they are diverse voices. You know, we want to make sure we're not just hearing from this portion of the community, or this portion. Like, we want so many different perspectives, because we're only going to be as good as, you know, the, the information that we're getting from people. So can you kind of just talk about what that looks like from your standpoint? How are you choosing that, you know, to make sure it's balanced and diverse?
Yeah, and, and it's, it's interesting, because I've had a lot of conversations with some of the people sitting in the room here as well, over the last year or so. It, just to kind of pick their brains a little bit too. And, and it's been from a pretty broad spectrum. I've got the, kind of a running list of who I've spoken to that, again, I think would be very valuable in adding their voice to, to our strategic planning process. I know in, in conversations with, in email exchanges with some of you as well, and there's that desire of, you know, making sure that we have like a professional community survey that's done as well. That's going to be broad-reaching too. So being able to gather all of that input from our entire community is going to be, I think, one of those priorities for us too. So looking closely at that, that ESC account that we have, again, so we're not having an impact on the general fund. Anything that we do with the strategic plan is going to be paid for out of that ESC funding that, that doesn't have that negative impact. And, and I believe we've got the, the budget there to be able to do both that facilitation group from the League of Innovative Schools, and the strategic, or the community survey group as well. So, again, hoping, hoping to make that decision here, and to have some conversations so that we can move that forward. Because we'd like to get that community survey started ASAP. That way, as we're having conversations with the group that's going to be facilitating the strategic plan portion, we can refer back to that community survey data to kind of dictate some of what's going on. But, but again, from our stakeholder group, I think the other thing that, that I'll be doing as well is just reaching out to each of you individually, and say, hey, can you, can you give me a list of five to ten people that, that you feel would be good, you know, for a facilitation group that we could have meeting with our, our strategic plan facilitator? Not sure exactly the, the, the number that he, he slash she slash they will be wanting to be in, in one group, but, but we want to make sure we get community, we get students, we get teachers, we get administrators, and we, we obviously capture the voice here of our board in that.
I think that's a real important opportunity, a community survey. And I know I emailed you about this, this week, when you requested our input, but, you know, I think having employee feedback is incredibly important. I know in the past, when I've been surveyed by my employer though, there's definitely been some reluctance. So I guess I would want to see some real steps to ensure that we can make employees feel comfortable in providing their honest feedback. And, you know, it's, it's been a rough three years or so, for our teachers especially. And so I'd like us to take special care.
Secure their privacy.
Secure their privacy, make sure they feel comfortable, and that they trust that we're keeping their information anonymous and private.
I was going to say, could we, and I know Gallup has very rigid rules about, you can ask these nine questions, that's it. We can guarantee it. But could, because Gallup has now established, I think, a credibility, a trust, because we've been using it for several years now, might that be the sa- the way to talk with our staff?
And, and again, the, the other company that does that is Triad. That's the, the one group that we got to quote from. But we've had some internal conversation around Gallup as well, because we have a pretty good relationship with them, with some of the other surveys that we utilize on an annual basis here. So that may be something that we can reach out. I, it, it may be more cost-effective, I don't know. Can you write that down, Ms. Jesslyn?
Yeah, I will look at that. And we do have the ability to customize questions.
Oh, terrific.
I, I, I do want to, also, this is something I mentioned in my email to you as well. I think the surveys are great, I think, you know, a questionnaire, even if, I heard phone interviews are possible. But when I looked at Triad's website, I also saw that they have the ability to do focus groups. I think dialogue provides an opportunity for a different kind of feedback, a deeper level of feedback. I think when you get folks in a room together to talk with each other, and answer questions together, I think back to that, that facilitation, I believe it was OSBA, who, you know, we came here to Paradigm, we were looking for a new superintendent, and having a lot of folks in the room together really spurred more conversation about what we hoped to see in a future superintendent. It was a big list. But, but I've seen focus groups work really, really well, and organizations be able to leverage the outputs of, of those group conversations in really positive ways.
I think you're so right, because for all of us, I know that in healthcare, for example, over the last couple of years, or, or Walmart, or any number of entities, you know, you finished your checkout and bought your eggs and, you know, shower curtain. Now they want to know, you're like, did you get the kind of, good lord, I, I don't have the kind of time to invest, even if it's ten minutes, that, that a lot of folks don't have the time or inclination to respond. So you get kind of a skewed result that may not be terribly reliable. Where a focus group, if you can invite enough people and they actually come, that can give you kind of a captive audience to get what you need.
Absolutely. And I would agree with what Ms. Marchaza said, because I was at that meeting, and I was so surprised, because people were so respectful. Even though they might have disagreed, it was very productive, I thought it was really well-done. So there's that. And then I also wanted to mention, I know this past year, we had the retirement incentive, and I have had a couple teachers, previous teachers, from that are, you know, contact me with their input. And so maybe we can reach out to some who have retired, because they're a little bit more free with their opinion. They're not, you know, as held back. So maybe looking into that, because we did have a lot of people retire this last year.
Yeah, and, and, and one of the things I know, I can't remember which one of you sent me the resume, but you, you know, making sure that we capture, like, current and past students, and current and past parents. like current and past students and current and past parents. Maybe some of those parents, well, I've got one on my list already that I, I know of that I'll be reaching out to that, you know, I had a student that needed to go to another district and, and has worked out fairly well. I need to touch base with her again. But, you know, making sure that we capture that voice too. I, you know, okay, what, what prompted you to, to want to go somewhere else or need to go somewhere else? And, yeah, those would be valuable voices for us to do.
And I'm assuming any of these groups that you're looking at are, are really experts in helping us form these groups because majority of people aren't parents in the district currently. You know, so we do need to make sure we have a good sample.
Absolutely. Thanks for the feedback there on that too. I now hope as we finalize this here in the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
Because at first glance, it looked like the one group, the, the one that was the most attractive, well, that was a higher cost. But by the time you put all those other pieces together, they were virtually the same.
Right.
Yeah.
Real quick, I'm not trying to, I know we're trying to wrap up, but how difficult is it to, like, when you're doing the strategic plan, knowing that we are, have so many different financial scenarios? You know, something in it might, like what Maggie said, losing that S or we might want to put that in our plan, but we can't, we don't necessarily maybe have the money for it. How do you, how do you do that? How do you, that's tricky.
Well, that, that will be a challenge. I, there, there will probably be some things coming out of the strategic plan that are, you know, may end up being wants as opposed to needs. And we're going to have to prioritize some of that. But, you know, we can control some of the, those conversations as we're going through the process too and, and, you know, put some dollar figures to that. But, you know, whatever gets spit out here eventually, you know, obviously we want to try and do as much as we can, you know, focusing on those goals and action steps out of the plan. But when it comes right down to it, you know, the other thing is going to be one of those other things that, that we have to consider as we're doing this.
But your question is more of like, so you have five good ideas, you only have X amount of dollars, how do you determine which ideas?
I've never been through this. So you have to like show that you can afford, your goals are realistic or no? No, we have to pick. Yeah, right, okay.
But what I'll say is, I, I've, I've always worked in districts and worked with people that I, we, we always talk about dreaming big. And, and then let's figure out how to make that work. There are some things that I think we can do in, in shuffling staffing and shuffling buildings and shuffling resources around to, to really benefit our students. Just to give you one example, I, when we built Emerald Campus when I was in Dublin, you know, okay, yeah, we purchased the building, but it saved us a bunch of money in the long run because we're looking at building a, a fourth high school or Emerald Campus. So instead of building a hundred and twenty-five million dollar building for our new high school, we bought a building for ten million, put another nine million into it, so we're nineteen million all in. Okay, now we've saved the district a hundred and five million dollars. When we, we started playing around with the programming pieces, we got all the programming that we wanted in there. And then the superintendent came to me at that point and said, okay, now you have to do it with no new staffing. I'm like, okay. But when we started that process, we made it happen because that was a priority we set. We knew what the, the financial parameters were and, and we got it all to work. And, and again, a lot of it, you know, you get into those mindset shifts with some of our staffing and saying, hey, what about something like this? And taking that expertise that you have in your content area, but let's apply it this way. And, you know, some of them came along reluctantly and then after the first week or two, we're like, oh my gosh, this is the best thing ever. So I think those are some of the things that'll come out of that process. I say, let's dream big, let's figure out exactly what it is that we want pie in the sky types of things. And then let's figure out what our goals are going to be to get there. And then we'll, we'll just, we'll sell more buses.
Sell more buses.
See, that's a good comedy show. We come full circle, we come and end it. That's how every comedian does it, right? Then you come out and you walk out.
I know, what happened to our sensory?
The sensory, hey, dream big, sensory bus.
How about a sensory truck?
You've done a lot of that already, just in the partnership with Lakeland, Dr. Glaven, and rethinking, you know, some of the new curriculum that has, is going to be offered for next year. So a lot of it is shaking off the, but we've always, and so I, I appreciate that very, very much.
And, and I hope that comes through loud and clear. And, and I'll probably say that over and over and over again as we go through the strategic planning process. But dream big. I, you know, I told the teachers when they were creating things, I'm like, you figure out what you want to do and how you want to do it. I said, I'll figure out an EMIS code to tie it to on the backend to make it work. Just dream big.
Well, this is the innovation and the problem solving that we saw when, when we hired you.
Yes.
But I know that we're really putting you to task.
Yes. Those big sleeves with the deep cuffs. Yeah, satin skating outfit, you know.
There's another fundraiser right there. Another fundraiser.
That's even better than getting dragged out of the, the lagoon.
Yeah, that's true.
That's a good time.
People might pay good money to see you.
But, no, I, I'm excited and I, I think, because the strategic planning was done in seventeen eighteen. And, and it yielded great results. It really did. And I see this as an opportunity to build onto some of that vision. But, you know, when you think about in March of twenty twenty, the whole world shifted on its axis. And nothing's been quite the same since, you know? So it's a very good time, I think, for us to roll up our sleeves and look at.
It's a good reset to hear from the community and, and really align to what, what the community wants.
And give us some common vision and common direction.
Absolutely. And I think when you sit down with a group, even, even if you have different ideas going in, once you start looking at numbers and talking about priorities, you find, I think, a, a much more common vision that lets you move forward really in a, in a far more productive way.
It'll be fun, looking forward to the process.
Those big postage sheets, I love the big.
Well, yeah, nothing to be going for a policy.
Oh, come on, that was so much fun.
Who's the policy?
Lauren and Rose.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that Viola update should be coming to us soon. So once we get that, God willing, we're going to take a look at it, we'll, we'll set it time.
Should I buy them some lemon cookies? You gotta try those delicious lemon cookies. They got me through. Oh, that's true.
These are special.
These are special and, and if Girl Scouts made them, we probably couldn't afford them. So yes, I'll get some of those.
Ms. Wade, you done? I think I'm done.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Sorry. Jenny was first.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Annie. Let Annie go first because she, we said it simultaneously.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. Ms. Payne. No, Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Iaffalo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Media juror, seven twenty-nine.